Are you ready? Okay, welcome to the President's Board of Education Workshop for Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. Please hand the flag to the leaders. The flag for allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God and the Constitution of America. Thank you board members here this this meeting discussion. We have two topics, our agenda that are news for discussion. One of the future board, the future workshop discussion topics, yeah, but is the superintendent evaluation process. Um, I'm thinking in this discussion, we may want to flip it and just talk about the future board workshop discussion topics because I anticipate superintendent evaluation will, uh, call this one executive session. And I anticipate that we return from executive session. Ms. Davis did collect from board members their priority for future workshop discussion topics. So I want to thank everyone for their patience and for submitting that information. I know our next two workshops pretty much have been, um, the topics have been selected. We have one next week meeting with the different employee groups. And then the next one after that, I anticipate would be, uh, dealing with the MOU for the Wilmington Schools Collaborative. And then there's a number of other topics coming up. So is there any discussion about those future topics? We have them, I, if, if you're ready, we can start scheduling. I would say one a month would be good.
A question.
Yes.
I, I saw some correspondence and I, I wasn't clear on it, said that, um, the CEA, I guess it was, couldn't meet and they wanted to change the date. Did I see that or am I just a matter?
Oh, are you talking about on February 1st?
Yes.
I did not, I don't, I don't recall reading that.
I thought, I, I thought I read an email where they said that they were, it was the day that they were scheduled to meet. And they asked if we were scheduling a different date. I, okay. Okay, just disregard, disregard that.
That meeting's been noticed for next week. It went out.
Thank you.
Okay, and I, yeah, we had an email today that that meeting, the notice was posted. Yeah, the meeting, the next study session is Tuesday, February 1st. Anchor location is North High School and employees would be able to participate in ESM if they so prefer to do that. And when I read the agenda, it looks like preference given in speech to people who are there in person, but we'll make sure to balance between the two. Any other comments about the upcoming workshops? Okay, well, let's talk about what, what we can talk about right now, the superintendent's evaluation while we're in this session, is the criteria and the process. So I know that we finally are scheduling this workshop. We started circulating documents that showed examples of rubrics from previous evaluations. And that has been brought back to the top of everyone's inbox. And then I took the information from those and made a blank document. And I sent everyone a link to a Google document with it as well as a link so you can look at it. We can look at that in our executive session and work collaboratively on that. The, the things that, I'm Smith Tucker, she's coming in. The things that we see, uh, on that rubric that I shared are taken from the superintendent's job description. And we can discuss if, it's long, it's about seven pages long. And for each, uh, area of evaluation has a scale from one to five. And then there's room for you to write comments. So what we're here tonight to do is to agree on the tool that we're going to use. And we can discuss that tool in public, but if we start talking about anyone's performance, which I anticipate we will, uh, we'll be going to executive session. Uh, you can let me know if you have any feedback on the process. I do have an idea. There are seven board members here. And yes, oh, I see Dr. O'Neal has a question.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. I just tried to access the Google form and it says that I, I don't have access. And I tried logging in with my Christina.k12.us.
Okay, I create, it's the same as the, I also attached it as a Word document. It has, nothing has happened to it yet, just in case that happens. I created it on my Christina, um, Google Drive. If you can't access it, the Word document that's attached is the same thing. So, um, what I, this is, I'm to start the discussion. There's, once we have the criteria or the rubric, I think that all seven board members should complete their own evaluation. And then we might have to get together and make us a report. That's a summary of all of our evaluations. I think everybody has probably different feedback. So when we actually do the evaluation, I'm, I'm not sure for each page, we're all going to have to agree on exactly the same thing. So I'd actually like to give everybody homework. Well, we, well, once we agree on the tool, I'd like to give people the opportunity to go really do a deep dive and themselves answer question by question.
This is based on the document and my computer's upstairs as we said.
That's okay.
This is based on the document that he sent out.
Yes.
So, but I just want to be clear of what I'm hearing. You want us to then look at that as a format?
Yes.
And make any recommendations, suggestions or changes that we would have?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And then we would do, we would?
Just on the form. So the form is basically taking the person's job duties and making them into a rubric that we can evaluate. That's all it is. Do you, so?
Are we using this form for the evaluation?
Right now, we can evaluate the form and not the person. If we agree on the form, we can go into executive session and have a conversation about performance. And then each board member can take the form home. Take, we, our next meeting is February 7th, 9th?
8th.
We're being charged. Okay, so you have two weeks to go.
I'm sorry, um, kind of my lateness is unavoidable and, um, uh, and because I missed the chat, I'm like, a recap. Are we this evening having a robust discussion to develop the criteria for the evaluation of the superintendent? Or are, is it being suggested that we use the existing?
I gave you the existing form, so we're not starting from scratch.
Okay.
You can take a look at it. Definitely open for discussion.
Okay.
So if we started from scratch, we wouldn't be done. We're already a few months late on this.
Dr. Parker Pallow suggested the board members after the meeting tonight can look at this and see if there's change. But if we use the form as you prepared it to begin the discussion and executive session about Dr. Shelton's performance.
Yes.
And then we can, based on that, if we want to change the form and criteria, we'd have to come back and do that in public session. Either later time or a meeting, probably a future meeting. But it could be an iterative process as we go through. It's not like we can't talk about the superintendent's performance in executive session until we get a hundred percent clear on what this form is, if we got to do that. So I think we can do it as an iterative process. And in the process of that, develop what we want to use for future years. So Dr. Shelton has it ahead of time, not here for the fact.
Correct, because we're now eighteen months into this superintendent and really we should be doing evaluation every year. So if we kick this again, we're now evaluating him like twice in six months.
We are, well, I, I for one think you really don't have much time to take this. I, I don't know how we today, or even in the real near future, come up with a document that we can all agree on and say, we're using that to evaluate him without having prior opportunity to have a discussion about whatever we come up with. I, I think this process is, for me, is a process that is, if it's want to be fair, takes place uh, with the superintendent in September, October for the school year. School year is now moved on and now we're talking about for this year, developing something that is going to hold the superintendent accountable for something that came up after the fact. So, so I'm like, and maybe it's just me, but for this year, I don't know how we now come up with a document to say we're going to hold the superintendent accountable for now. Because if we get this done, we're probably talking about March, maybe. And you're talking about April, May and June, or half of June. So I don't know how we evaluate anyone, in, in my opinion, fairly in the document. I, I think we've shot this year. I really honestly think, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't want someone to come to me in March and say, we're going to develop this is the tool we're going to use to evaluate you for this year. I would want to know what my targets, benchmarks, goals are for the school year so that I can put in place a process to hold the people accountable up and down for this period of time where they're going to be evaluated on it. Maybe with some different terms because they use a different document. And I'm going to be evaluated on it directly from the board. But to say, we're going to create this in March and then for the school year, I'm going to help the council for that. I wouldn't want, I would, I wouldn't want someone to be back to me.
You know, I believe a contract here would be July 1st to June 30th. I mean, one could say this is from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021.
And I was trying to remember, what's Dr. Shelton's contract for, three years?
Five.
Five, that's what I thought, I couldn't find it. So we're not, we're not at the point of talking about renewing, but we're talking about providing feedback on his performance. So, and, and I agree with you. I think that's where we need to get is, um, an evaluation template of what we would evaluate on it. And we need to get, and my experience has always been too, when you do those, people at that position, you got to get there and put to it too. Because there may be some specific things that Dr. Shelton wants to be evaluated on. There are his personal goals for the district and we've had that from previous superintendents. Now, I, I will just comment on my own opinion that, that Dr. Shelton was hired in July of 2020, right in the middle of COVID. So my own personal opinion, his goal for the next year was to keep the district from falling apart totally and, and keep kids getting some kind of education. But I also believe that we could take what Dr. Powell has put together, which is very generic. And it very closely mirrors the kinds of things that are in his contract. But we can use it to get our, collect our opinions and then begin discussions with him that we think there's any areas that, that need improvement or if there's other areas that we think are going, well, fine. Because I mean, some of these are like, make recommendations for going selection with district personnel subject to board approval. It's just a wall state belt. I mean, that one's very clear about what that means. And I'm sure that Dan knew that that's something he had to do and he's been doing it. So I think that's one that, you know, so if we could get into those, I think some discussions about, oh, we think his performance has been in that area or any other areas. And then share them with him and start the dialogue, which will lead to a set of criteria for evaluating him for the 2022, 2023 school year. It should be in place by June, by July 1st. That's essentially when the year starts, so.
Yeah, I, go ahead, go ahead.
Monica, turn your mic.
Uh, Don, I, I, I completely agree and understand where you're coming from. Um, so I'm like, there's definitely some things that we need to be thinking about long term. We need to have conversations. Dan needs to be part of that transition, understanding of our expectations of him. And to do that, to work on that in the next couple of months on some scale for the 2022, 2023 school year, I think is appropriate. But at the same time, I agree with Fred, this is a generic thing. That's not a bad opportunity for us as a, as board members to use to begin to, for Dan to see kind of some of our concerns and thought processes. It definitely gives him an idea of course corrections he could make in the last quarter of this school year, this, this academic year, right? Which is, we're waiting, um, I don't, I, I feel like this could be more of a feedback form than say the traditional evaluation form, largely because it's not like there's that contract right?
So let's say that, let's say this is a feedback form. Because if you say it's an evaluation form to me, it holds a whole different standard. And there should be some, there should be metrics. There should be agreement that is established when, when you come to me and say, I'm going to be evaluated on X, Y and Z. We need to have a collaborative conversation about what X, Y and Z is. So if you want us, if, if we change the conversation to, we haven't developed the tool, the instrument that we want or need to, to be able to assess and evaluate the superintendent on an annual basis. I'm good. If you say this is feedback based on the fact we haven't been able to establish that, but we're going to establish that.
This is our, our first thing for some sort of. I see Dr. O'Neal's had her hand up, just make sure I'm not blind. I'm sorry, what? I see Dr. O'Neal's hand up.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Powell. Um, I definitely hear what, um, what Mr. Patton is saying. And I think that going forward, we need to be, um, kind of more collaborative. Um, and also what Fred was saying, what Mr. Plasky was saying, we need to be more collaborative with Dr. Shelton in developing a tool to evaluate him. But I also want to reiterate what Dr. Powell said and, uh, what Ms. Moriaq said, that this is something that the board is required to do. There are a few things that are written in our policy documents that we are legally required to do. And one of them is an annual evaluation of the superintendent. Obviously, we are seriously overdue and we've been talking about this. And we as a board have been aware that we needed to evaluate the superintendent for many months now. So, um, I feel like we need a place to start. This is a place to start. Dan is aware of, um, his job description. We're all aware of his job description and the board. When we hired Dan, wrote the job description. So, um, I think that's a fair place to start for our first and admittedly overdue evaluation of him. However, we have to evaluate him because we're required to, um, according to our guiding policies. That that's actually one of our primary policies. And I pulled up the policy document that the superintendent's management of the district is the prime function of the school board. And the executive, oh, sorry, I'm reading the wrong thing. It's like, um, da, 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 the board, uh, will incorporate the results of its reviews into the superintendent's annual performance evaluation. This is policy statement on management oversight, zero, one dot, zero, two. Um, so because we're responsible for our single employee, the superintendent, and we haven't yet performed his evaluation in a year and a half, um, I feel like we are way overdue at this point. He's way overdue for feedback from us. So us, um, starting from his job description is a great place to start. And then we'll use that as a starting point for his evaluation next year.
So we're using feedback and evaluation like it's interchain, and it's not. They're, they're very different. And, and I understand the fact that we are responsible for evaluating the superintendent annually. And I would take a step further and say, irregardless of COVID, when we hired the superintendent, we should have set some metrics and other things and had this done so that the first year, we could have done this irregardless of COVID. We could modify it, but we, we, I agree, we should have been evaluating the first year. And I certainly agree, it's more than timely that it hasn't happened up until now. That's not my issue. My issue and concern is fairness. And if we have not sat down and set goals and objectives to the superintendent, how we come up with the evaluation now to say, we've evaluated, we evaluated on this. First of all, there's no metrics. So what I saw in the document that I looked at, there weren't metrics. I, I, we need hardcore metrics if we're going to be fair. And they need to be agreed upon. We need to sit down with the superintendent and say, uh, our student, this, these, this is the data on our student growth over the last three years. This is the goal for you for next year. This is where we are with our parental involvement. This is the goal for us over the next year. And when we're having that conversation to me with the superintendent, then we, I would feel comfortable saying we can hold, we should hold you accountable for those outcomes. But if, if we're now going to come up with this and then say, for the last two years, you should be held accountable for this. I, I don't think that that's the system that makes me feel comfortable. But it's a democracy. So if we vote and, and, or we can't take a vote tonight, but if the agreement is, I'm sorry. The agreement is that we, you want to move forward with that. I'm just saying, I, I'm against it from the standpoint of fairness.
Can I ask you a couple of questions related to that, just so I understand better? Um, so I agree, especially from a metric standpoint, they need to be there. Um, but they also, he needs to know what they are before he's evaluated on them. They're not in here, so there's no unfairness from a metric standpoint. Because this particular one is basically, uh, relative, relatively generic. There are no metrics, but it is based on his job description. So there's not really anything surprising in here, right? Um, so it's, I guess it's a soft evaluation. I, I, I'm trying to understand this particular one for this timeframe as we also develop the next one, which will have metrics that will start July 1st. What is unfair specifically to Dr. Shelton about using this as a soft evaluation? Um, so he has something, so we have kind of that, um, thought, we're starting to think about it. And then we have a way to grow from it. I'm trying to understand unfairness specifically here.
Because, because it's subjective, it's not objective. I don't have anything to measure these things that I'm saying. So, but I have a feeling. And so based on my feeling, I'm going to evaluate this person. I, I want to, I want something to be clearly objective when I say that this is what we're evaluating on. That, that, that would be my answer to that.
Okay, I, I agree with you. This is definitely subjective and not objective. Um, and if there was, I believe that if there was a contract renewal, a bonus or some other thing, positive or negative tied to this, I would say the unfairness definitely pops in. But there is not. So I don't know that the fairness is quite the same level. Um, so I, I think you're, you're right. So I see this as a soft evaluation. It gives us an opportunity to kind of practice because a number of us have not done this before. And it also gives, uh, Dr. Shelton some feedback. It's where we are. Um, some of these are definitely going to be hard to answer because they are so subjective, right? But there's also opportunity for comments. And so there's opportunity for, for growth for him and direction changing. I don't know what the other, the action of not doing it sounds worse to me.
I see Mrs. Smith's.
She had her man up to speak.
In terms of our responsibilities in, with regard to board policy that he, that an evaluation is supposed to take place. Um, and now we are a year and a half into his tenure that hasn't taken place thus far. Where do we stand in terms of legality? Because the, the horse has already left the boma.
All right, so this, this evaluation, he's supposed to have annual evaluation. Making this evaluation six months overview, which is why I'm saying that needs to get done. We're supposed to be evaluating him. He's in a five-year contract. You're at a five-year board term. So, but he needs to, the superintendent doesn't need to give you that.
And, and so that's what I want to know, because we're already far out. So I'm going to know if there even kind of consequences, penalties, something that, um, we need to be aware of in terms of not fulfilling that policy on time. Because now we're splitting hairs in, in terms of whether we're evaluating him six months, four months.
So this is, so he's in a five-year contract. Our duty as board members are to provide the feedback and the evaluation.
I never thought doing it. I'm just saying that this is, are we subject to any penalties thus far because it's been a year and a half?
Yes. The board is not subject on penalties.
Okay, I just want to make sure in terms of policy and, and policy administration and his contract, which, um, I've, I saw the, the, um, I have the, um, the job description, but I don't have the contract. One thing I would like to see, and if that's available on board docs, is the contract. Cause that is our legal obligation. And then that will help inform me as far as how we're splitting hairs in terms of feedback and evaluation and the creation of a, a, a more fair, um, evaluations with metrics. Because as it sits right here, I have a lot to say about this existing one.
Can you say it? Cause we're, it's okay to say it.
Oh, in terms of, um, gosh, I don't have my.
It's okay.
But in terms of their, it's so ambiguous. It is too subjective.
These are the job duties.
Um, the evaluation.
Right, it's the job duty to me. That's what it is, it's your job.
Yeah, but that's why I want to include metrics in evaluation. I don't think, I think there's too much subjectivity, it's too much ambiguity in an evaluation versus a job description. The job description gives you, um, an overview of it, but that is not necessarily how you're going to be evaluated. And that, that expectation, um, needs to be more clear. That's why we're going through this process. And I've asked for this process for several months.
One, so we, and I just want to point out, every person here has had this information for over a hundred days.
Yeah, but we couldn't discuss it. Not as, as in the format. So it doesn't, yes, we've had the information, but we can't have a robust conversation because of such shallow employee. So we have it, but it's not until this workshop that we're actually able to have a robust conversation about what we feel would be the criteria for evaluating a successful senior as a superintendent. So that's why we've been waiting because of the confines of that.
Yeah, I, I, I've had a document, I have several that I bought with me. Because I'm not in agreement with that.
Okay.
Cause I don't think that that measures anything. I think it's just a conversation piece.
Does anyone have another document? We don't, this does not have to be the rubric.
If we're evaluating him, I'm going to come back to the same thing. Let me just use an example as a teacher. There's a job description for a teacher, but we do D-PAS. And in the D-PAS, one of the things I would love the most as a principal was it gave me a chance to sit down with the teacher and have a direct conversation about those five components to say, what are we going to do with this to make sure we're meeting these goals? We, because they asked to have this goal. For, for us, just to say, this is a job description and we check off this one through five or whatever the case is. And then have a discussion about it doesn't tell me anything about Francis' culture. So I can say the culture's not good, that is bad, but what are we using to measure that? So that we're being fair and consistent when we have that conversation. And yes, there, there are other documents, um, that we can use. But I thought this was opportunity for us to have the conversation of saying, what would the evaluation instrument look like? I didn't understand that this was the conversation to say, we're, we're going to use this because we haven't had the conversation. We haven't developed a, a collaborative effort as to what the goals, the benchmarks, the targets would look like this school year. And unfortunately now we can't, that's my opinion, just because we're so far along in the school year. But I don't think it's that far that we can't have, begin the conversation or have the conversation about what that instrument would look like. So that moving forward, we, we develop it, then we sit down with the superintendent and say, okay, here we are. We, we think that student performance should be 10% over the next year. And he said, well, no, that's too aggressive, it should be eight. That, those are the conversations that you're having before you say, we're evaluating you. And, and again, I'm just saying that for me, I feel more comfortable if you said, and I know the legality is of evaluation. If we said, we, this is feedback. Because I, there, it's just, our opinion on what school culture or district culture looks like is Fred's on retention looks like, it should look like. It, it, it's mine on student perform, it, it just, it's all over the place in terms of being subjective and not being quantitative or qualitative in terms of objective measures that we could use to, to assess and evaluate. And the fact that we didn't do it in the first year, I, I think says something. But I think if we try to push it now, I, I just think it's not fair. That's all I'm saying, guys, enough finished, I don't want to say anything else. I, I just think it's not fair, that's all I'm saying, I said nothing, I don't want to say anything else.
I, I guess there's a couple of points that, just an example from some previous superintendents where their performance evaluation goals, and they actually proposed these, was an increase in graduation rate by, I think, up to 5% or something like that. And, and that's very measurable, and, and that's the kind of thing that we don't have for this year. And, and I, and I believe that the board maybe not focus fully, but in reality, that those are the kind of things that you really couldn't have measured with everything I learned with COVID and virtual learning. You know what was going on, and we need to do that in the future. I believe working with Dr. Shelton to come up with reasonable, achievable goals that, that push him and the district to go where we need to go. What we do have though here, and I'll just give a couple of examples. Um, that were some of the things in here I think are quantifiable. And some of them are more subjective, that they're things to talk about, one of them is under category B. Prior to this meeting, Superintendent Pocaros, three board member, meeting agenda listing all items in business and including supporting data is necessary. We could provide feedback on him, to him on that, which I think is very discernible that you can say, yeah, I don't think there's been anything missed on agendas, or you could say, yeah, on these three agendas, he forgot to put these items, and, and we can be very specific about it. Then there's another one that's more subjective, informs the board about issues of interest or concern in a timely systematic fashion. That's one we could provide feedback, that says, damn, why didn't you tell us about such and such? You know, and there's some of the things that, I think these things are good to use at this point for discussion, to provide feedback, which he would, if, if you want him to improve, we need to tell him where we need to improve, and if we don't have that discussion, I think there's good things in here to talk about. Then we're not providing any feedback, we're not doing our job to help him become a better superintendent. And at the same time, we ought to be developing a much more quantitative, agreed to set of goals for the 2022, 23, well, maybe even further, maybe we set some goals and go out five years, because he's got a contract for till 2025. And then we can work with those, because that way it's a longer term look than just that. And if, and if in the first one we do, it's only for a year, and then we keep working, and by December 2022, we've worked with him to come up with a five-year goal, that's fine. I mean, we, this isn't something that needs to be done and cast in stone, you can't change it for a year. We can change it depending on how the world changes, if things need to be done differently, so. I mean, what happens if we're back in school and then something crazy happens with COVID and the decision is made, we're going to go virtual for the next two years? Then everything totally changes different, so we just need to be, especially today, need to be flexible on, on this and work within with, with the goal to have students better educated, so.
I, I agree with, what, what you said, what Fred just said, and I just counted five times. Fred said, feedback. Five times, and that's what I'm saying. If, if we say this is feedback that the superintendent can use to get better, I'm, I'm good. But if we say this is his evaluation, there are things in this that don't even come close to what I think should be included in his evaluation.
I see Dr. O'Neil has had her hand up.
Thanks, Dr. Powell, I just, I sort of, I sort of don't want to stop us from moving forward by getting hung up on these two terms of evaluation versus feedback. I've been evaluated many times and all of my evaluations have feedback, so I'm not held up in moving forward with this rubric as a place to start. Um, I, I would like to evaluate the superintendent, I feel like it's overdue. Um, I feel like this is a great place to start, if other people don't agree. Um, there is an option that those who do agree could move forward. I'm just, I'm sorry for my doc, but I'm, I'm kind of concerned that there's a lot of talk about should we evaluate or should we not evaluate? For me, that's not the question, I feel like the question needs to be, what is the tool that we're going to use for this evaluation? And we can't vote, but those of us who wish to use a tool to evaluate now, we need to develop that tool now.
We also could, if, if there's a problem with semantics, like if this doesn't look like an evaluation, I can change it to superintendent feedback, if that feels more appropriate. And I, I do agree, I, I can't make anybody do anything. I had to put something out for discussion, I'm not hearing edits to this document. I could use this document to give feedback. It could be if you want to do it, you do it, and if you don't, you don't. Or if you have another document that you would like to use.
When do we have the discussion about the criteria? Or this, so is it, so let me understand the process, because this is maybe where I am a mess. I thought the whole purpose of having a workshop was that we would evaluate each, we would come to the table with some of our own ideas, everyone listened to each other. This is a starting point, not the point. And that we would actually workshop, have a discussion on what we see as a value to the um, the school and how we measure success. I feel like we're bypassing the conversation, and just because a document was shared, simply saying this is what we've done in the past with no other um, in, information or inference of this is going to be our starting point, this is I thought it was informational purposes, because nothing else said in the email otherwise. And then I knew that we couldn't all sit together and have a conversation about that document until we either were in a workshop or a board meeting. Are we going to have that process?
I think that's what, that's what Dr. Powell is saying, that let's have a conversation, that she has put up one document. If we have another document, we can put it up and start discussion.
So. Yeah, I even, I wrote, I made this to help streamline our discussion. I didn't say this is the criteria. If, if, if the, I didn't give you a blank piece of paper, because I would like to, um, I personally would like to leave with a, a product.
Okay.
So if we started with a blank sheet of paper, we wouldn't leave with a product.
It says, okay, the data you go to probably will be used, is that they, that's what you're about to do with this line?
Well, what I, what I've observed is I hear differing opinions on whether or not it's feedback or evaluation on the process should be. I'm just, we've, we've reminded you that we're supposed to do an annual evaluation slash feedback that is wanted to use the board. If we kick this out, meaning push it out, we already have our next two workshops scheduled. So you're effectively saying we're now eight or nine months late on this.
I mean, a, as far as I can, as far as I have observed in, in how we've been operating, we have made concessions and, and we've, and things have come up. I know that for months now, I have been speaking about superintendent evaluation. Actually, since I, uh, since the beginning of my first term. And so I don't understand now that we're actually starting to have the conversation that we're not going to put in the time and the diligence to make it right. Where there was, we, this is the inconsistency or the consistently allowing things to happen and, and we, we're flexible. I think we should also exercise that same body and stature now to be flexible so that we can get to a point that um, we have um, an enriched document that's purposeful and meaningful to the outcomes of our children that can, um, that's thoughtful and intentional and that it, it, and that would give you the just, the, the time and the just do that it deserves in this process. Um, and I'm ready to begin that process, I'm ready to go line by line. With this, because at this point, we don't have to say anything final. We can use this, like you said, as a framework. Let's start with, with number one question, how do we feel about it? And work at the process, but let's not shortchange the process in, in some contrived sense of immediacy, even we haven't had it since for the last year and a half that I've been sitting on this board.
I, I remember having conversation to have this workshop back in August. Right, so from August till January, that's a long time, we should have had this workshop earlier. And.
No, no disrespect, I know we tried to schedule it, it's been a challenge during this time. It has been a challenge.
But I think, oh, we've, we've had this conversation that will commit every Tuesday. So although there are other Tuesdays that are already reserved, you know, next Tuesday is reserved, and the following Tuesday is also a board meeting. Uh, but the third Tuesday from now, I think it is still open. Oh, it's a back.
It's a, yes, thank you. We're both all, I mean, we're both in March. Yep, so we're already closed. That's what I can hear saying, we're already closed.
But we can start the discussion, right? So this, it, is it possible that the document that we currently have can be the beginning of discussion, so that we start putting in, what are the metrics that we want to think about? That we can then bring to Dan, to Dr. Shelton to, um, you know, look at him on, right? But also, we can also use this current document as a feedback, um, so that he has something this year, or is it best just to say, you know what, this year is shot, let's just not worry about this, we'll go forward and we'll discuss metrics. Um, honestly, I could go away, I just wondered if there was an idea. And one other question, once we come up with our metrics, um, you know, what we're going to evaluate on, does that need to be voted on as an executive thing?
You don't vote in executive session.
The metrics aren't voted on. Right, I mean, the metrics aren't in executive session, right? So if we're going to decide that we think that there should be a graduation rate, and we think there should be a test score rate, there should be a community involvement rate, and whatever it is that we can come up with, that's what's going to go in the evaluation for next year, is that document voted on?
Not the, not the information.
Not the information in it, but the design of it, is that have to be a, an action item that is voted on by the board?
I have our historian here. I've done this once, I don't recall voting on that.
And I can't remember either, I, I know that we've had evaluation forms from previous superintendent, had very specific numbers on the criteria that superintendents proposed to the board. And the board agreed to them, I can't remember, it was three years ago or more, whether it was in public session or we just, to determine that executive session, we probably have to ask uh, council whether we need to do it in a public.
I see Dr. O'Neil. Yes.
I just, uh, thank you, Dr. Powell, I just looked um, up the um, on board docs, the different meetings over the past four years where um, the board conducted superintendent's evaluations. And it was all done um, either during board workshops or um, during executive sessions, there were no motions that were made in public session to uh, vote on a rubric, so it appears that it's all done organically.
Just to repeat, there's, there's not a vote on the rubric in public session as well. That's not something that needs to be voted on.
That's, that's what I've observed from a search of the meetings.
There's time before the next board meeting to, to know about that, if we wanted that, or the next couple of it. I mean, it's going to take a little bit to workshop this, but I think we should start the discussion now with some specifics that we want to start with. So that we can then expand on that and put that in, maybe the first of March as our, or the end of February.
As a deadline, as a deadline, have it finished? Have the document finished?
I was more thinking it probably would be an almost finished draft and see whether where we went with that. But I don't know, it depends on where we go from here, and it would require some discussions and working with um, Dr. Shelton about um, his thoughts on whether it's too aggressive or not, so uh, there might be some need for setting that up. Um, but I just feel like start here, let's, let's make a list and see where we go from there.
A list of a list of numbers or things that can.
Well, okay, so we've decided, we think graduation rates are something that we could, are measurable. Although we should define what that's, how that's going to be measured, because we know the state's numbers are a little hinky. Um, what are the things that we want to look at? Whatever they are, whatever the criteria are, let's make a list of what those things are. And from there, once you have a reasonable list, then we have to get an idea of what's the, what, what is the data we have now? Where are we, right? So before we say we want a graduation rate of 3% increase, we'd need to know where we are. Is 3% reasonable, whatever, and how is that going to be measured, right? What is the definition of a graduation rate increase? Um, how, how are we going to measure that? Are we pulling it from the state's report card, which is behind the times anyways? Um, you know, how are we going to do that? Do we go into executive session to have this conversation, or do we do it right now in terms of this criteria?
Do you start talking about a person's performance who works here, and you go to executive session?
We're not talking about anybody's performance.
Just sharing.
I just, thank you, and so right now, is, this is the time that we're supposed to be going line by line?
The discussion can be, it doesn't, it can be line by line, it can be, I'm taking notes. You can tell me, I want to look at graduation rate, you don't have to figure out how it's calculated. I want to look at the test score, you just, I mean, just take notes.
Okay, okay.
You don't, I mean, there's eight pages here, if you go line by line.
Oh, okay, I, I thought, okay.
So there are things that you don't see that you want to see. It's also if you're able to access the document.
So I think there, there has to be something around parent engagement. That's a part of it. Um, but, but I still want to come back, like what you said when we started was, I'm going to give you homework. And I'm okay with that. I'm just not okay with what we should, what we need and what we should be using to evaluate a superintendent. That we would move forward with just creating something and developing something now. I, I think that's the process, and I, the homework piece connected with, resonated with me. The, the conversation piece resonates with me. What doesn't resonate with me is we want to use this now as an evaluation for a person who is the head of the district. And say, we're creating this on the fly. When, yeah, we could say COVID was there, but we still could have been working on developing a, a, a evaluation tool. And we still could be modifying the evaluation tool, because we still may have to do that. We don't know that we won't somewhere along the line, because of circumstances, have to modify it. But we ought to have it, and we ought to have it in agreement, in collaboration. We ought not have it, and we, we're going to sit here and use something that we used in the past that is three, almost three fourths away through the school year, and then we're going to say, okay, this is an evaluation. That's not the biggest, my biggest issue is that word, evaluation versus feedback. I agree 100% with everyone who says, for this year only, we need to give feedback, because it hasn't had anything over a period of time. I don't agree that this should be used as a formal evaluational process. Unless we sit down, do our due diligence, do our collaboration, and then come up with something that we can measure. And, and if you all remember, my first meeting on this board, I said, we've got to look at data.
When do you want to set, like, I thought that's what we were doing right now.
I don't think, I don't think you can, I think we need to develop the instrument.
When do we develop it?
We should, we should ongoing now, so that we have it, so that in June or July, or whatever date Dr. Killian or Dr. Powell, sorry, gave us, when that date rolls around, we have the instrument, we've had the conversations with data.
That's what we're doing. That's the point, that's what we're doing right now, is we're starting the, developing the instrument to use for next year.
No, they're saying they want to.
Let me try to summarize, uh, let me just try to summarize what I'm hearing. What I'm hearing is that what we need to do is start to work, get input from people, do their homework, about what measurable quantitative parameters should be in an evaluation process. And work with Dr. Shelton to get agreement for the 2022, 23 school year, what they are. And maybe it even will go out through another couple of years beyond that. The other thing that I'm hearing we should be doing, and this document could serve as a format for discussions for the board members' opinions on how well Dr. Shelton is doing in his first year and a half as superintendent. It's more qualitative, how well has he communicated with the board? So we could put those things together, and it could be things that I'm hearing, or things that or things that, that are in addition to this or even if there's, there are things that, that in addition to this, whatever. So we could provide some feedback so that he understands where we're thinking about where he is doing his job today. And, and, and I don't think we should take several meetings or weeks or months to try to do that. We could start doing that in executive session tonight. Is which of these are important and how well do we think? I could say in that topic, I think he's doing a great job. On this one, he's doing terribly and he needs to improve in this area. So we can provide feedback, thought evaluation, thought feedback, thought communication. I think we need to do that as part of the process and that will roll into the more formal evaluation for the next year. And my other experience has been on these kinds of things. We can sit here and talk about areas for evaluation, but they're so hard to discuss and understand unless you're talking about them within reality of actual performance by people to make it much more understandable. And to do that, we need to talk about Dr. Shelton's performance. We can't do that here. We need to do that in executive session as a way of developing those areas that we would later put into a more formal evaluation process for future years, so.
Have, I am unable to access the document. Can someone provision?
Which one?
The one that Brett sent you.
I sent you an email this afternoon and it has a Word attachment.
Right.
It came, I can tell you what time. And I, and Mr. Pulaski sent one yesterday. So for today, I sent.
The Google form that you sent means approval. The request.
Okay.
Okay, I see in Word. Okay, it's something I left.
It's the same thing as in Word, I don't.
Okay. All right.
I see.
Oh, I have some, I have some topics to share. But, um, superintendent's, uh, primary, it's his job description. I haven't taken the time to see how this is going to align with the job description.
I'm sorry. So I have his job description in my hand. So this job's description is supposed to align with this document that you shared, yes?
That is correct. Okay. And this is meant to be a collaboration. I had to put something out for discussion so that we have a strike.
Okay.
Is there a way to turn on the lights here?
Did everyone here express? So yes.
What did Brett know? I'm sorry, Brett.
I, I think he's right. I think that, um, we, we probably do need to go to executive session and talk about specifics.
So I'd like to motion that we go to executive session.
Uh, we don't have any votes.
I guess we don't vote, we don't, we just go?
Yeah, just go.
Are we done with everything we want to do in public session then?
Discuss future workshops, there was a robust discussion of the rubric. We are slipping into talking about someone's performance.
So we're, we're designing this specifically on Dan's performance. We're not doing it as a generic things that we think we should, uh, look at? I, I guess I'm trying to make sure that we are limiting what we do in, in executive session and what can be public. I'm always thinking about Dan.
I, I would think we go into executive session and we can use this as a format or as a guide to discuss the superintendent's performance and that will inform each of us as to what we will want to do with our homework to provide input, maybe collectively go to Dr. Powell that says, here's the items we think should be in the, the superintendent's evaluation for the next year. And we don't decide on that in executive, but it will stimulate our brains to think about, we take notes about what we want in there to help us do our homework and then provide that all together. Dr. Powell, since she started, she's got the Google Docs. We, we put it together and then we can discuss that in a future meeting. We discuss that at a regular meeting. We don't need to have a special workshop. You know, we could do that and we.
But our regular meetings get really long.
Well, it could be, but we could also have a little topic and we've got a document to look at and people could provide written comment ahead of time we could look at and we say, yeah, we think that's good, let's go off and do this. And we could do it in 10 minutes, given the process is working, we don't, we're not starting from scratch, so.
Point of clarification.
And we can limit ourselves on those kind of discussions to say, okay, 15 minutes total and each board member gets two minutes or something like that, you know? And then when we hold it at the end and when people get tired at 11 o'clock, we can say that's enough, we'll talk about it next meeting.
Point of clarification, please. So Monica just said it. I thought I heard Claire say something else. Is this process for 22, 23? Or is this process for now? This year?
I believe that this process is to provide input and feedback to Dr. Shelton. But by doing that, will help board members better understand what each of us would like to see in an evaluation document for the next year.
Okay, the first contract year was July 1st, 2020, June 30th, 2025. That year is over. It could be some look back, feedback to that with some narrative about future goals. That's a suggestion, that doesn't have to be what we did.
I didn't hear what you said.
The first, the first year he was under contract was July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. So it could be a look back, review, review and giving feedback. And then there could also talk about setting future goals. We could set long-term goals that go through June 30th, 2025. We could set some midterm goals and we could discuss those.
Dr. Powell, I agree with you. I think the, the discussion now could be from July 1, 2020 through now. We don't need to end it specifically June 30th, 20.
Well, I didn't want to end it today because I don't know if we're going to finish this today. That's why I had to pick this up.
We don't make, well.
You don't want to leave a gap.
We don't, I don't want to limit it and leave a gap. We just talk about it because this is a process of result. And, and if this is discussion and feedback, we can provide feedback to the superintendent anytime we think it's important to do that. You know, when I, I was working, I provided feedback to the people that worked for me when I needed to do that. Every six months I had to sit down to do a formal evaluation. But if you needed feedback, you did it right away. Because you didn't want people to go for another four or five months and not know that what they had done wasn't what you were expecting them to do. Or conversely, if it was a really good job, you wanted to give them a pat on the back right away, so.
So, so I think what I'm hearing is that we are in agreement, um, in terms of providing feedback. Uh, Dr. Powell said she's open for renaming instead of saying the evaluation feedback and that's, that's it. And then we'll be working toward a, a, a different structure and framework for the evaluation going forward.
Yeah, this is, this form belongs to this group. I don't have to be, I just suggested it could be renamed. This one belongs to the group.
I, for one, feel that that is an acceptable compromise given the situation, given the circumstances that we are in presently. Because it is, feedback is still an evaluation per se. If you're saying we're taking a, a look to, it's just a form of an assessment. Dr. O'Neil.
Thank you, yeah. So it was my understanding that because we have not yet completed an evaluation for the superintendent and his term began, um, in July of 2020, that what we were providing evaluation and feedback for was the term up to this point. Um, it was also my understanding, um, that the form that Dr. Powell provided was intended to be a rough draft and we could decide to use precisely that form to do this evaluation and then have it be our homework and have our evaluation be completed for that period of time. Um, and then going forward, we can, we can do whatever we want. We can change this however we want tonight and have this be our evaluation period for the past 18 months. It seems to me that, um, it, it's, it's just my opinion that it would, it would be an efficient way to go about it right now to use the form that's before us, which is actually the same superintendent evaluation form that's been used for many different superintendent evaluations in the school district in the past. So I would completely agree that going forward, we should work with Dr. Shelton to include other data-centered measures, um, student success metrics, community engagement metrics. But as it is now, I think this is a great place to start to provide him some feedback and to enable us to be a little bit efficient to do this now and to then move forward and look forward to how we might evaluate him differently. But that could be a, a, a question for future us instead of now us.
Dr. O'Neil, how is that different from doing the feedback?
Well, it, my understanding from the form that Dr. Powell provided and the structure of the meeting as it was advertised tonight, the entire point of this workshop was for us to develop the criteria by which we would evaluate the superintendent. There are criteria before us in the form. We can agree on them or, um, change them or do whatever we want with them and then proceed forward however, and, and we can proceed forward with our homework to fill out that evaluation. Then if all seven of us decide to complete the evaluation, then we have seven different voices to provide information to the superintendent about his job performance.
So we can do that and go into executive session in order to figure out how we're going to start the process of developing, uh, a more robust data-driven criteria that would be used for 2022, 2023 school year. We could do both.
I, I, exactly. I strongly feel that we should do both. I feel like we should start with this because, to be frank, it's what's been used before. And it's not that we should always do what has been done before, but when we are kind of this tardy to one of our primary responsibilities and, um, the, given, given the fact that this is, has been perfectly fine as a, as a rubric for other boards just like us to use, that it would give Dr. Shelton seven different voices potentially to, um, to hear and to get, um, and, you know, and, uh, an idea of how we think his job is going so far, some suggestions from each of us. Um, I feel like this could be a really important and thorough process for him in his own, um, kind of job performance going forward to take it in. And then if we wanted to proceed in a different way for future evaluations, of course we could. Um, we could change this, but I just, I feel like this is a really effective, efficient way to go for now to get some feedback that is way overdue. And then going forward, um, we can wrap in other things as we see fit. Certainly, we could wrap in other things right now and incorporate that into the evaluation. I just see no purpose in changing this instrument for right now when we could just do a little homework. Um, we don't need an extra meeting. We could just do this on our own and have this feedback back to Dr. Shelton in two weeks. We will have completed our due diligence in a way that has been satisfied by other boards before and then we can move forward, uh, with however we want in, uh, an evaluation form going forward. So yes, so to say what you were, to kind of paraphrase what you were saying, it doesn't have to be either or, it can be both and.
I appreciate Dr. O'Neil's perspective. I'd like to get this, the, the process started as, so that we can start and then we'll see how it flows. Um, I'm not yet ready to commit to, um, sacrificing quality for efficiency given the fact that, um, we've already lost count is the, the, the horses are already out of the barn. So I still think that we need to be conscientious of, uh, Dr. Shelton's position and the fact that going forward, uh, we're going, I'll give an example, like going forward, we have the, uh, strategic plan. Specific goals and items that we're paying for, for a consulting company to come in. We want to see a return on that and, and also the impact of that. That needs to be in an evaluation specifically in terms of metrics. But, um, I don't want to belabor because I do believe, I made a motion for executive session. Oh, okay, so can we just move on to executive session? I agree.
All right. Yeah, I, I, I'm going to caution us. Some of us have been on this board longer than others. And I want to caution us when we reflect back to other things. I think that Dr. Powell's given us an instrument that we can use, um, to springboard off of. But for me to suggest that that is the wherewithal, um, we're on another superintendent. So that tells me a lot of things we've done in the past didn't work and that's one of them. So for us to suggest that because that document's been used in the past, that is a document that we should be using now, then we might as well just keep spinning our wheels. We need to be, if, if we're going to have an evaluation, it needs to be a real, concrete, collaborative, sincere evaluation based on metrics that we can look back and say, did we meet these targets or not? So when I look at a superintendent and say, we didn't meet these, it's not me personally, it's the data. And so when, when we start having subjective evaluation processes, it puts us in a place where we've been so many times. And as a person said to me in the community last week, we can no longer keep doing the same things. We need to be drastically different. And if we start with a process that is critically important, which is the evaluation process for the superintendent and it's not based on any metrics, there's been no dialogue, we're doing the same things and we're going to continue to get the same results. So we want to change. We've got to stop doing what we've always done and we have to start doing the things that we know are going to give us the results that we need.
That's what we're trying to do. That's why we're going to.
That's why we can't go back and just say automatically that that document is a document that we should be using to evaluate someone. I agree with Dr. Powell. We, we take that document and we work on it to say, here are the things that are critically different that we need to measure to make sure we're moving the bus in the right direction. As opposed to saying, here's the document, let's take this document, let's use this document because right now we need to do something. As opposed to saying, we, we haven't done anything up until now. And, and there has been a push. I remember when I first came on this board, Mr. Tucker was saying, we need to evaluate, we need to evaluate, we need to evaluate.
No one disagrees.
And now all of a sudden it's urgent that we want to circumvent the reality of.
No one wants to do that either.
Well, let me say this, because what I hear is we want to continue to do stuff the same way. And I'm saying, that Fred is said it, let's use the document we have for the feedback. Because I think everybody's in agreement that there needs to be some feedback. But if we're using that document as an evaluation tool now, I think we're doing a disservice. However, I do agree that the evaluation needs to be done, but I don't think we're in the window right now to do that evaluation in a fair and assess, and honorable and the way that we're really assessing what we want to assess.
So let's go into executive session and work on some feedback of the superintendent. Okay, so that's what we're doing though, is working on feedback.
So we're not going to discuss the other metrics of how we would design a 2022, 23?
That, that's your, that's your homework. They'll open do that tonight after we get done here. So what you, what you.
No, but you can. But you can. I, I think that discussion will probably inform what metrics you're going to bring back to the future discussion. I think, I think we, we're stuck right now. So I think we need to talk about feedback because right now we cannot start talking about evaluation or feedback because we're in public. So I think we need to get, start the process of doing feedback as a group. You're going to come up with all kinds of metrics that you want. I ask that you please either write them in this form, bring them back for public discussion for metrics, please, in the future. Yes, you, yes, yes, yeah, sure. Yeah, thank you. We're going to executive session and we anticipate a journey from executive session this evening. Okay, yes? We are going to return from executive session. So that's it.